Welcome to the July meeting of the Bronxville Planning Board. Thanks for coming out tonight. I'm Michael Goldman and together with my fellow board members here, we've got a few things on the agenda to go through. Looking forward to it. We're going to start with the minutes of our last meeting on June 11th where we considered the application from Iona and put that over for further discussion. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? And if they're okay, would someone like to make a motion?
So move.
If they're second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. We have the minutes for June. In terms of tonight's business, we're going to shuffle the order a little bit. The folks from Taco Project had a conflict, so they want to go a little bit later in the meeting. So we're going to proceed in the order of the Taverri, then 34 Sturgis, the Solar Project, and then Taco Project at the end. So for the Taverri, there's an application for sidewalk dining. If there's someone here to speak on behalf of the applicant, could you come up to the podium, speak into the mic, and let us know who you are, please?
Thank you to the members of the Planning Board and Village of Bronxville Building Department for hearing our proposal. My name is Kimberly Sheldon, and I am representing Pratt Black Architects. We have been retained by the owner of the Taverri restaurant, Marco Lojano, to prepare and present an application to increase the amount of outdoor seating allowed. This application is to increase the amount of outdoor seating at the Taverri restaurant. The former restaurant had a previously approved allowance of four tables and eight chairs permitted, which rolled over to the new ownership. The Taverri is requesting a total of eight tables, six at 30 inches square, and two at 24 inch square, and 28 seats. All seating will be contained within the storefront, defining the storefront. An aisle of five feet wide will be provided for pedestrians at all times. A buffer of five feet is provided between the seating and the curb. There are planters of no more than 30 inches high, and a parking meter between the curb and the seating. In addition, we are proposing four bollards for additional safety. The Village of Bronxville Renewal Application for Sidewalk Cafe Permit states the following as cited from the Building Code Section 31014B relevant to our proposal. At a minimum, the outdoor seating area shall leave a five-foot clear path free for all obstructions in order to allow for adequate pedestrian movement. This minimum distance shall be measured from the portion of the outdoor seating frontage, which is nearest either the curb or the nearest obstruction. Parking meters, traffic signs, and trees shall now not count as obstructions. We understand that the Chief of Police at the Bronxville Police Department has stated that he is opposed to allowing tables and chairs at the curb line, and that there should be a 10-foot setback from the curb line as patrons sitting at tables and chairs at the curb line are vulnerable to a motor vehicle accident. The code specifically cites five feet as the distance required from the curb to the outdoor seating, which this proposal accommodates. We are aware that there are safety concerns, so we recommend adding these bollards along the curb to prevent cars from accidentally jumping the curb in addition to the existing parking meter and planters, which will provide some protection. There are precedents for these bollards at current outdoor seating areas in the neighborhoods such as Underhill Crossing, La Casa, and the Bronxville Diner. We believe that the risk is very low at this location, as this is not a busy street and there are only two parking spots adjacent. This sidewalk is unusually wide at this location, which we believe warrants the amount of outdoor seating we are requesting. We respectfully request that you grant this proposal.
Okay, I think before we get to questions, is one of you the owner of?
I am the owner of the restaurant. Jerry Palmer, building owner.
Okay, terrific. So all three of you are here on behalf of ownership. So, you know, before we get to the merits of the proposal, I think we want to discuss compliance with current standards. My understanding is that, you know, the village has requested that, you know, restaurants that were given additional outdoor seating during and after COVID come back to their approved level as of this spring. And my understanding is that that has been requested, but there's been a little back and forth where it's been reduced, and then suddenly it has reappeared. So if one of you could please speak to that, I think that's going to be an important consideration as we consider this.
The restaurants even prior to COVID, they always had the wide dining area. The main concern was that they would not encumber in any of the other properties. I just just put the chairs in front of it. When I spoke with the previous owners, the town never had an issue with the additional chairs in front. Now, I understand that the fact that there wasn't an issue before, it's not an issue after. But, you know, during COVID, we all were allowed to external dining. I'm also the owner of Rossi's Bistro on the other side of town. We've been there for 20 years. We were fortunate to have the outdoor dining, which we have not applied for it again because, to be quite honest, we purchased Taverri, and that will give us the opportunity to have outdoor dining, so there was no point of taking all that space.
Yeah.
With that in mind, when we applied last year, we, and we applied for it for all the seats that we had available last year, and this was post-COVID as well, paying the fee of $150 per chair and so forth. When this year, we, I went to the town and, you know, to pay the, apparently it was $2,400 for the extra seats, I was informed that we need definitely go back to previous, pre-COVID numbers, and it was that. So they accepted just the fees for what it was at that point. We promptly tried to get into the June, into the, I'm sorry, not into the June, into the May Planning Board, but it was too late to get the drawings and all of that, so we didn't. The outdoor dining at Taverri is one of the main attractions of this restaurant, especially now with Park 143 being closed. Patrons that go there, if I have to be honest, especially in the summer months, they do want to sit outside. So the, my understanding, and at that point I spoke with my architect as well, was keep it the way that you want to have it as the planning board can walk by, and see that you're not obstructing anything. They can see how it looks, what is it that you're asking for. Again, we, we have done in the previous years. I did not see an issue with that, and as we were hoping to get the same thing, we went through that. When Mr. Palmer, the last email that we received about a week and a half, about a week ago, or two weeks, I'm sorry, but we spoke about it, and he insisted that I definitely have to do this before I go into Planning Board, we removed the extra chairs, and we went through that. That, that was before the weekend on a Friday. However, we were fortunate or unfortunate, however you want to see it, that we had so people wanted to sit outdoors. My manager at that point, Rossi's was closed. My manager decided to add, bring up from the basement, which we had moved all the chairs away, and accommodate the extra guests. Immediately after that, we took it away, and when I received the notification from Mr. Palmer that we should not be increasing it, I was very specific. There is no way we will just keep the four tables with the two chairs, and if we need to take chairs from one seat to the other one, we will do that. The outdoor dining on this side of town is realistically, and let me be blunt, in summer months, when this restaurant makes its money. Winter, unfortunately, it's a smaller seating side, the capacity is not as full. So for us, to limit ourselves to eight seats, it really affects the business. And again, in the previous years, we haven't had this issue. And that, that's the only reason. When I try to be, you know, breaking any laws against that, my 20 years of Rossi's shows that we tried to accommodate any and all by laws of the town, being part of the town. I've been so fortunate to be, we've been so fortunate to be part of the town for the past 20 years, and we would like to continue to do it so.
Yeah, well, others on the Planning Board may have questions also, but I think, you know, this is a real concern. I think, you know, we, we all work pretty hard here at the Planning Board. We're all volunteers. You know, we're doing this because of our love of the town, and, you know, if, if we take action and approve certain things, and then it's ignored, you know, by the proprietors of businesses, I think we could all kind of feel like we're wasting our time here. If, you know, we take action and it has no impact in the real world in terms of what we're doing. And so, you know, I think when we're considering an application, I think how the owners of the, I mean, we're all big fans of outdoor dining. We're all big fans of having the restaurants in this town thrive, though that's, you know, I think a core principle. But I think an applicant who comes in who hasn't been, you know, following the, you know, guidance of the village, I think is a disadvantage compared to someone who has been. But, you know, I'll let others ask questions, but that's how it strikes me.
So you're saying that you received the request from Jim Palmer to remove basically the three tables against the street side?
The, pardon me, the three, the three tables and one of the ones on this side as well.
Okay, yes, that's right. And?
And the extra chairs, my apologies, and all the extra chairs in front.
And that was done, but the order wasn't communicated to your manager?
No, no, it wa, it was done. It was in the, in the weekend. We removed the extra chairs. We removed the umbrellas that were there, because that, that's one of the things why the tables stay there, because they have the umbrellas, they have an ice protection.
Where are the, where are the umbrellas?
If you see the circle in the, in top of the tables?
Yeah.
Those are the umbrellas. They go umbrella.
In the center of each table?
In the center of each, one of them, yes.
So you left the umbrella?
No, we took everything out, pardon. We took everything out. But at night, when we got customers asking to be seated, and we had no outdoor, no more seats outside, my, unfortunately, again, I was not there, my very enterprising crew, they started to help them and bring two extra, I'm not even sure if it were two or three tables that they brought back up while they sat down, and then they removed them at the end. So the next morning, it was like that.
So you're saying it only happened one night?
Tonight, Saturday, Friday, and Saturday, the weekend night.
So basically, the weekend?
Basically, the weekend. As soon as I received the notification, of course.
And Kevin, does this align with, because you were monitoring somebody, does this align with your understanding of what happened?
I think I was out there on the 27th, and I spoke to Fiona, and I told her the tables aren't supposed to be there. She started removing right away. But before that, I think since April, Jim requested that they shouldn't be there, and they were there from April until end of June. So, and then last weekend, they appeared again, so.
At the evening, we took them out, they haven't been there since.
Yeah, but you had from April to June where you were out of compliance, and then you were in compliance for a week, and then out of compliance again, so.
Once again, and again, it's not an excuse, but we were trying to go for what it has been there before. I, again, I can only apologize that I didn't realize it would be such a massive big deal with this as previous years, there have been extra tables, and they are, Jerry can testify to that, the previous owners had that as well. It's not something that we started you doing just to disrespect the town. It has always had the extra capacity outside.
So there was a couple of months?
I'm sorry?
Where you ignored Jim Palmer's request to reduce the number of tables?
I'm so sorry, I didn't hear you. My apologies, I didn't hear.
Sure. So you're saying that for a couple of months, there was not compliance with Jim Palmer's request to remove the three tables, the four tables?
I do not have the specific dates of the email.
Roughly.
I think there were about two, two, two weeks prior, two, I'm sorry, two or three weeks prior that he sent me the email. I will have to double check that. That was not addressed from the beginning. He told me that I have to address the town and up, and get an architect to get approval of the extra seedings. But to us to remove the tables and everything else did not happen until later on, probably May, I believe, but I'll have to double check when it was that.
We're being told there was a request in April, and the tables weren't removed until the end of May.
Again, I can double check the email. We do have the email chain where he requested all of that. I do not believe it was in April, sir, I believe it was in May, but I can, I can double check that right now if you like.
But there was a period of non-compliance?
There was a period of time, yes, I'm not gonna.
The tables are, excuse me, the tables weren't off until the, the weather, until the end of May. There were no extra tables on in April or May?
No, no, we were not using them. I think they were out. But again, I can, I can double check the exact dates. But yes, on that, once again, whatever the reason is, yes, we, we, we did have the extra seats outside. Again, it was not respectful, it was just thinking of previous restaurants, the way that it has been in the past.
Yeah, I think one of the things we had been considering, you know, in light of all this, was whether this should be reviewed at this meeting, or whether it should be reviewed at the, unfortunately, there is no August meeting, so it's, it's a two-month issue rather than a one-month issue. But one possibility would be to, you know, put this over until September, and you would have to live with the, you know, smaller amount until then, and then you would have sort of, you know, lost the period that you would have had, but you gained a period that you weren't necessarily entitled to. That's not a conclusion, it's just something we were trying to think about, but we thought it would be better to have the meeting tonight, and at least have the discussion rather than just put you over to September. But that was always sort of a possible, you know, solution would be to keep you at the lower level, even though we love outdoor dining, and even though we support our restaurants, because there might be a certain fairness in doing that, given that you benefited from something that you weren't entitled to.
If, I might say something, unfortunately towards that, as much as I will say we did benefit, if everybody in Bronxville realizes, most of the, most of the weekends and during the week of that, we have mainly rain. So I'll be honest with you, one of the reasons the tables are there, it looks nicer. It looks enticing. Even if we were not sitting them every single night, because the weather was that night, was not the nights, if you see the picture of this presentation, you will see the difference with only four, with only the four deuces and the full setup. The area looks alive. It really, without them, especially again, without the other restaurant open, it just, it's a deserted corner. We're trying to make it a little more enticing, appealing for people to walk, to come out to dine in there.
Now, Kevin, I think what you're recommending in light of what the Chief of Police said is something lesser than what they've proposed here.
The tables closest to the curb should go, because that's what the chief recommends, and then the five-foot path in between, you have pedestrian traffic that the waiters would have to be dodging that at the same time, so.
And, and do you really have a five-foot space between those two sets of tables?
Yes.
When people pull out their chairs?
Absolutely. That was measured by the, in the blueprints.
You can feel free to point it out if you, please feel free, because they see you have it marked.
This is the five-foot clear from chair to chair, and those chairs.
Right, right, I see the five feet. I'm asking, that's assuming everyone is up next to the table, but?
No, they're pulled out, they are not pushed in. The chairs are not over allowing them to the table.
And what's the distance from the planters to the chairs on the tables closest to the sidewalk?
Right, so it's five feet from the curb.
From the curb.
And as the code states, planters and parking meters do not count as obstructions?
I, I think if they're passable, that's correct. But the way we've interpreted is that if you can't, you know, walk there, it's not. Those planters are not walkable, so I don't think there's five feet there.
There's, from the feature now.
Right.
There's enough to pass.
Well, depends whether you've had lunch yet.
Yeah. Or whether you have a stroller, or whether you have a wheelchair, or whether you're walking two by two. I mean, that's tight.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, in a sense, the planters that are meant to block what the chief is worried about, and the five-foot clearance for pedestrians.
If, may I, if may I address that?
I, yeah, sure, I'm done.
The planters can be removed. The, the, what we, the planters can be removed, that's not permanent fixtures, there's small little planters. What we're proposing to add to alleviate the concerns of the chief are the bollards in front of the parking meters. That will be the actual barrier preventing any cars accidentally from jumping the curb.
Well, there's two concerns, right? One is the chief's worry about cars jumping the curb, and the other one is pedestrian access to paths.
Pedestrian access, if, if I might, please?
Yeah.
Pedestrian access to the curb, you have the access to here over in the corner. There is definitely food for, for pedestrian pathway. There is area to walk in between the planters before the bollards, of course. I guess this is just a possible way of that. It's not a requirement, because you know, you don't need that, I mean, you have to for once, but we just try to adjust everything. And there is enough room to walk in between, obviously, between the mirrors and around the mirrors. These are not massive planters that they take in the whole side of the corner. These are just small decorative planters for that. So they do not block the access.
So what are you, are you proposing to remove the planters, or not?
Whatever you decide.
Oh, I see, okay.
If you guys feel that it blocks it.
It's not important to them.
I think they look nice, I don't think they block it, but that's, that's great, whatever you, you decide to like. These three tables in here, if you feel that they're too tight, obviously, they can, it's probably cause now, it's over there. This is just offering the dimensions as tight as they can be with your garage and everything else. But the sidewalk, of course, over here, we're not, you know, there's nothing there. There's nothing blocking the access for handicaps, storage, or anything like that, which will be coming along for.
I just had a comment. I mean, we went through, I think it was last fall, last spring, we were told, asked by the trustees to review all the outside dining and make it by half or three quarters, and I don't think the Taverri came up to us by then. Is that correct?
I think that was the on-street.
Yeah, that was on-street.
On-street as opposed to on sidewalk.
Yeah.
I think the request from the trustees was to reduce the on-street, like what Underhill's has.
Yeah.
I think it, it didn't relate to this. This is our second wave. Our first wave was on-street, the second wave, I think, is on sidewalk.
But, but no one's.
Is that right?
Correct.
But, but no one's come, no one's come back to us asking to increase the on sidewalk?
Well, I think I might phrase that as, as yet.
It was not a call to people that were allowed to vote for additional seating.
Yeah.
Until now, because COVID was allowed, that they, just saying, if you can try to vote away or to ask for additional seating.
Okay.
But it was 2024, I didn't hear anything else. And there was an email last year in April, sent to them, telling them they have to go to the Planning Board. They have to go back.
April 2024.
April 16, 2024.
Okay.
Go back to the Planning Board.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Since they're transitioning from, what, off COVID, you will need to submit an application to the Planning Board to amend, to amend what calls was previously approved.
Right, but it may not have explicitly said, in the meantime, you have to go ahead, back to your original.
You were asked to vote last year.
Yeah.
We didn't.
Yeah.
April of this year, they were told, told you that you have to do it.
Go back to the pre.
And I would just like to say, the application did not come in in May for the Planning Board. Your application was actually submitted, passed the deadline for the July Planning Board, and we got invited.
We appreciate that, yes. We did.
It was not here for May, I would want to think that you guys didn't submit because you came in.
No, no, when, when I spoke with you was in April, and if, if I recall properly, correctly, it was too late, it was the deadline to apply for the May. It was only like two or three days later.
I think you guys didn't submit anything, so I'm going to set that, and let me set submit it, and I'm letting you go with the timing you got on. So even if you didn't, you couldn't be true, but it literally came in three days after the deadline.
Friday, I believe it came in, yes.
But Albert, more broadly, I think on this point, a bunch of restaurants, let's say, take Haiku, had very expanded sidewalk seating during COVID. The village permitted that because they wanted the restaurants to make it through COVID, and everyone now has been told to?
Go back.
Go back. And so this is one of, I think, a number that we'll be getting from folks who will be looking to have maybe less than they had during COVID, but more than they had approval for, given the experience. That's my guess.
Yeah. Yeah, I do think that there's going to be a learning curve, both for the businesses and for this Planning Board. And we did look at one application recently where we enforced a rule that didn't allow obstructions within that five-foot passage.
I think that was for the new coffee shop.
Yes.
Is that right, Jim?
Yeah.
And so I think they wanted to push further out, and we said no. Isn't that the case?
Right, right.
Give them half of the one.
Because the, we, we didn't take a very generous interpretation of the five-foot passageway when it was obstructed. And I think there, what we had was a couple of trees.
And it's a narrower, it's a narrower pathway there, too.
Yeah, yeah.
The stadium plan that you will not be able to pass.
Right.
Can we just put two pictures?
Sure, let's do it.
Sure.
For this location, the sidewalk.
It does have. It's a much wider sidewalk, we understand.
So we feel like there are declines based on our, you know, so a large swath, and I think this is maybe a little further over than they are recommending, but still a packed.
But, but that, but that five foot in between the chairs, you know, people are going to be backing their chairs out, there's going to be waiters and waitresses going through them. So, you know, that's pretty tight for people, maybe not a lot of people walk through there. But, but that's not only going to be for pedestrian, that's going to be for your service people, correct? They're not going to serve from the street.
Yeah.
They're going to serve from that, that five-foot area. So that is going to be congested.
Yeah, and, and the code does say that that five-foot passageway, leaving aside the chief's recommendation of 10 feet, but the code says, "The minimum distance shall be measured from the portion of the outdoor eating area frontage, which is nearest either the curb or nearest obstruction." So the fact that you're leaving a five-foot clear passageway in the middle doesn't change the fact that the distance from the curb to the tables is not five feet.
If you specifically tell us about what is an obstruction and what is not?
Right, I know that. And, and we have interpreted that. It, it says, "Traffic signs, trees which have gratings flush to grade without fences or guards shall not count as obstructions." So the obstructions that you have there, I don't think in our previous interpretation we would have said, "That's fine," because you can see, if you tried to walk where that little bush is, you'd have a lot of trouble. That's not five feet of access.
If the planters were not there?
Then we'd be dealing just with the chief's 10-foot recommendation.
Yeah. One other theoretical question, if we can go to the prior slide, Christina, just sort of theoretically. What if, oops, we were there. What if you only had tables for two along the window, along the frontage? Would that enable you to still have these tables, but they wouldn't be quite so close to the curb? The tables for four?
Is, is, can I mention any more?
Yeah, I'm looking for more. You know, is, I don't know how specific that is, but I'm just saying, I'm giving you a theoretical, which is if you had tables for two that were flush against the window, and those tables weren't quite so close to the curb, you would both have more room on the curb side and have more room in between. And the reason I'm raising this is, all of us have been over on that side in the evening, and having a lot of tables out there is sort of aesthetically pleasing. I, I see the concerns of the chief, I see the concerns about some of the history here that we'll have to deal with, but it's a very lively thing to have two rows of tables as opposed to one. So I just wanted to throw out one other, you know, concept.
So what I suggested to Marco, if you came in and wanted three tables, and then do two, like scattered in front of it, so that way they are all in front of the storefront, leaving that larger open space, and then just, we had three.
So you were picturing them like bowling pins?
Yes.
Three and then two?
Yeah, just so that they're closer together, you're not leaving that open space there. I said it's possible you might get a report. You know, before him, previously to COVID, every table had been flush against the.
For the benefit of?
Yeah.
I know he's going to ask us to get back to the mic, so if we can do that, that'd be great, thank you.
Can you just go back to the, to the, to the real street view, please? The, the next one, I think, where you can see it better? No?
I think you zoom in.
You zoomed in?
Yes, she had zoomed in, whichever one you want.
Is that?
That was the one she zoomed in.
Yeah, I think James pointed out that, that those, at least my, from a bird's eye view, that's not five feet from that left chair to the curb. There's no way.
I, I agree, I think the.
That's not even, that's not even, that's not even two, I mean, I don't know. It's, that's probably a one-foot planter.
Would you scroll up a little bit to the not want top, please, if you don't mind? I'm so sorry.
Yes?
Yeah, that's, that's the one. I mean, there's a different angle, but you can see the space, not in the planter and I mean, it's a different angle, but you can see the space, not in the planter and the edge of the road and the table. Again, we have to use a ruler to set them up precisely, we will, again, with all respect, this amount of trying to give us the most access that people can, you know, to people.
But you could even see that one person walking, I mean, if there was someone walking and a couple of waiters, I mean, that's very crowded, and someone's getting up to go to the bathroom or getting up to leave, that just becomes, I mean, the only positive I see is, is it's, it's probably the least busy part of that street because you're the last building.
Yeah.
You know, if this was asked in the middle of town, we would absolutely say no.
Well, and on Pond Field, we had the reaction that we had.
Yeah, we would say absolutely no, there's no way this would be allowed, because it would be too many people walking, and it would be congested.
The other thing that you guys allow with the way they're lost, which they're the last block, but not just they let in the walkway a lot of times, and then people can-
I would want to, too, if that was a dog.
But we've got a lot of time, you guys are trying to go with this, and-
Yeah, yeah.
And then there's blocks and chairs, so it's, it's a little more involved.
Yeah, in some ways, on-street dining is a little simpler because you don't block the sidewalk, yeah, you just block the cars. And I guess the, the, one of the questions we have to address is, we have a recommendation based on public safety from the chief of police of the village, and if we reject that recommendation, that sort of sets a precedent that means we're stuck with five feet, and I'm a bit troubled by that precedent.
Was the alarm being an alternative to that?
I don't know, I don't know.
I-
I mean, the thing about bollards is for the on-street dining, they're supplemented by barriers behind them, right? So cars aren't going anywhere into Underhill Crossing, I hope.
I have another question.
Sure. Yeah.
Why are cars proposing three tables on the side over here?
I don't think there's much room there. It's on an angle, too. It's slopes, yeah.
It's very, it's very-
Yeah.
Like La Casa.
Not a very wide sidewalk, and it's got a little lean to it, so-
Two tables of two, or at least one more on the opposite side.
Those two tables are very small, and they're mainly used for car salespeople who want to sit outside at night. So it's like, you know, you can see it here, it doesn't, if you notice the size, you know, it's like-
Was there a concern that you guys had about what Christina had recommended in terms of a potential three and two? Did it block too much, was that?
Would it accomplish the same thing to just scoot those lower towards the curb tables over to get the same pit?
Can we go to the diagram? Yep. What are you saying?
Bowling pin idea?
These three shifts, so the same number, but they're still within the building, but they still be stacked.
But then you're getting closer to that intersection, which is dangerous on, on, yeah.
I mean, we have to, but we have a lot of-
This is also more aesthetically appealing, which is probably why you proposed it.
Looking at the, at the live pictures on the next page, if you zoom in again, Christina, the, the, the tables against the building, they only have two seats in the opposing floor.
In this photo.
Oh, good point.
I mean, I don't, I don't, if you put, I'm just imagining four, if, if you put two tables, if you put two chairs on the end of those tables on the left, that's awful tight.
Yeah.
And I think every picture, it's only two seats at the tables next to the face of the building. Is that, is that true, all those, all four of those pictures?
Is that true of all four, Christina?
So, so have you-
No, no, the four photos we have, are they all like that with only two in each?
Do you guys now have four chairs on those tables?
Can you see the picture?
Yes.
How we set up.
So you're ask, you're asking for two more chairs on those tables right there?
Because, and this is, this again, because in the weekends, if we run out of tables of two, that's how we set up all the time, but if a table comes in with three people, a chair, or a high chair, or something like that, so if we, if we apply it like that, and we walk in by and you see three chairs at a table, four chairs, because we run out of tables of two, then it's about, we again, have to apply.
So a table is an attractive nuisance.
Yeah.
For the best of these scenarios, hoping that we get that. Again, this is the best I've lost, or best we need, the three or the fours. So we don't want to apply for something and then again, doing that, because if we get tables of two, they get, the table is even smaller, if you see the diagram, the three tables that are in the wall of the building are smaller, because we see people there.
But in your, but, but in your drawings, it looks like they're two by six by two by six, and in that drawing page-
He's talking about the ones by the front door.
I'm just saying that's what you're-
No, no, the three sides of the tables.
Oh, okay.
I'm just saying this one here, yeah. It's two by six by two by six. Those are all, those look like they are identical sized tables, and you're saying they're not.
They're not, actually, one of them is an extra corner.
So that, that doesn't sound correct, then?
The two tables by the windows, if I can, I have the chair, but you must by the window, we own this, we own this, I, I cannot put my hand in the five of the table because if we get three people, we have a chair, but normally those are inserted.
And I, I respect that you think that it looks tight, but the code says five feet, and, you know, unless we change the code-
The chief has said ten, and there have been incidents, you know, in other places.
Yes, at, at the, at the curb.
And he would definitely would, and he would also want 10 feet in bollards, if he was here.
Yeah.
Well, CVS.
But those, those are two different situations, I'm talking about the distance between-
I know, we're just, but we're saying that the chief is saying one thing to us, and the code says another, we understand that.
Yeah, we have to make a judgment.
We get that, we get that.
That five-foot space between the tables on the interior of the sidewalk there doesn't bear on compliance, it's really five feet from the curb without obstructions, so, you know, uh-
The five feet from the end of your chair or table, whoever's adjusted, it'll-
Yeah, yeah. And I guess we don't count any encroachment by the umbrellas, because the umbrellas are higher than the-
It allows for one foot into the path.
Excuse me?
It allows for one foot into the pathway.
For the umbrellas?
Yeah, there, there's a-
Oh, okay.
Yeah. They thought about that.
And you can see that they are differently sized.
What's the diameter of the umbrella?
That's on the application and plan.
Yeah, it's on the plan.
There are seven feet on the outside ones, and five feet on the ones closest to the wall. Yeah, so you have a five-foot table with your chairs, and you have a seven-foot umbrella, so you got to put around that.
Yeah, foot each way, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, what's your capacity inside?
I'm sorry? Forty-six.
Forty?
Forty-six, including the bar.
So what is, about 15 in the bar, about 30 in the restaurant?
About 12, yeah, 14, about, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. A bit of both. Are there more questions before we, yeah?
Last question is, a review of your current approval is for four tables and eight chairs, is that correct? And so, though, how, how, if you were in compliance, did you set up the four tables? Is it the three along the front?
Four.
It was just four straight across the frontage, they, they all fit?
Previous planning board approval only allowed four tables, plus the next story.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Was every yard used?
Okay, well, if, if people don't have more questions, I was going to open up the public meeting before we go into our discussion, if that's okay. So let's open up the public meeting, see if there's anyone here from the public who would like to comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public meeting and I think go into our discussion, we've got to follow procedures here, Jim.
Yes, I agree.
And, you know, I'll throw it open, I think, I think there are two things we need to chat about. One is what solution we're in favor of, and the other is what, if any, aspect of the non-compliance recently, we want to take into account, either in the solution or the timing of the solution. So with that, who would like to speak up?
Yes, what I'd like to say is, I think the biggest issue we face here is what to do about the clearance from the curb in a situation where the chief has sort of unequivocally said 10 feet. And I think we're free to honor his request if we think it a reasonable and necessary one. Do bollards change that analysis? I don't know. And part of me, and I hate to say this, I'm tempted to ask the chief whether he thinks the addition of bollards along the sidewalk would-
May I?
Answer his concerns.
Last Friday, I called, and, and I'm just to follow the discussion, I didn't know before the board if I was allowed or not, and last Friday, I called, and let the chief to call me, precisely before I can, we can inform the board, to ask, if you put bollards on there, would that be, unfortunately, the chief denied it back to me, and I didn't want to be a serpentine caller, because-
Sure.
I don't know what the project is, but I did call trying to get an answer before this meeting, unfortunately, I wasn't able to, but I did call last Friday, when we get notifications about this, but I don't, it was last weekend, it was last Friday, it was a holiday, but we tried. Well, was it last Friday? No, last Friday was 4th of July.
Right, it's okay, let's, let's stick with the discussion here.
So I think, and, and we have, in a previous situation, admittedly a busier street, admittedly, I believe, a narrower sidewalk-
Yes.
Limited the owner to what used to be the default policy, which is put your tables up against-
Storefront.
Your storefront, and leave a, a lot of room for pedestrians to, to pass. And this is a public walkway dedicated to pedestrians, and if pushing tables close to the curb is something the police chief thinks is dangerous, given the number of incidents, admittedly all on Pond Field Road, again, I think, I'm tempted to give some deference to that.
They were all on this side of the tracks, I think, is what we could say, not all on Pond Field.
Six!
Five or six, yes, in the time it's been here.
But I think they've all been on this side.
Yeah.
May I ask a question about that? Can we go to the, to this side, so we can look, did you print this?
We'll, we'll let you do this one, but we're now in the board discussion, so-
Do you want to have the table, did you prepare, will you check the tables close to the tables, leaving space for people to come from on the other side of the-
This was what Christina was raising as a possibility, was if you had the three, and then you had, it's impossible to see how you'd have three and three and have sufficient flow, but if you had the three, and then you had the two spots in between-
We're trying not to-
That's why I was saying bowling pins, and theoretically, my guess is that would still be 10 feet from the-
More than 10 feet, actually.
From the curb, it would make it a little harder for your waitstaff and all the rest of it, but-
Again, we're just trying to accommodate the pedestrians, walking, you know, they have, you're walking through the sidewalk, you walk through there, but-
But you see, they have five feet in between the tables currently, and they have, I believe it's five feet to the curb.
Yes.
10 feet. And so if they were moved to a spot that was close to the other tables, you know, back of the envelope, you'd have 10 feet, if you had two of those tables.
Particularly those, those side tables, that many chairs, it would be probably be a lot of, especially when your chairs are out.
You'd probably be what?
If you don't have 10 feet, that actually probably, you slip all the-
You might get to nine or something, I understand.
You might also-
If you were to be using your chairs, that's why I said do three and two, not do three and three.
No, we were proposing three and two.
Yeah.
If your system were improved.
At this point, I was just asking if we, if we moved the tables, instead of setting them up like that, set them up close to the other.
Slip them down and stagger them probably on a better chance, just they're larger tables than they are, but if that's what they want to do either way, you would have to resubmit it and need, uh, question to be submitted.
Could you just add another chair for those two tables on the left? So you have two tables of three, and then you have three tables of four, so you've gone from eight seats outside to double that to 16.
I understand, so the three tables in front of the, of the, of the window doing a, a, at, close to the wall, is that what you're saying?
No, I don't think so, are you, aren't you saying the two other ones?
I think you have room to put three tables, that's a door there, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Right by the entry, you put another chair on either side, so you have two tables of three, and then three tables of four, if you, and then you get rid of, and you satisfied the chief.
You'd be going from eight to 18 if you did that, you'd have three fours, I think it's eight, I think right now they would have-
Twelve, three.
Twelve, three, and three, 18, I promise.
Yeah, you're right.
No, I'm missing the math.
He's proposing to put opposite the chairs against the window in the twos?
Yeah.
One more chair.
For a total of two additional.
Exactly.
Yeah, so you have six there, and then-
Twelve there.
Twelve, that's 18.
And you'd get rid of the outer ones, that's what he's proposing.
That's basically what happens in my statement, because right now, they only have two tables, I mean, there are two chairs, but four smaller tables, so they would be double here, number of three now.
Yeah, because then now they have eight, eight seats.
More, more than, more than doubling. In that way, you know, I just don't know how to deal with the chief's concern about the 10, 10 feet, we either subscribe to that or we ignore it, and-
I'm certainly not an ex, expert on auto safety, so I tend to defer to the chief unless he gives us an alternative.
It seemed like the applicant might have been having some of their own discussions, is there anything you want to share, or no, it's up to you.
Jerry?
Please, yeah, and if you could identify yourself, please, at the mic, thank you.
Jerry Houlihan, I'm, I'm one of the owners of the property.
Yeah.
One other possibility is, our office is right next door, we have a large window, and they could put a table in front of our, in front of our office also, would not impede us in any way, shape, or form.
Can you point that out on the map, please, where that is? Is it to the right?
To the right.
Yeah. Right, so that, the door that you're seeing, okay, that's my office, right here, right over here with the large window.
This is a little bit like, my understanding is, Christina, that during COVID, Haiku had an agreement with the, with the tenant next door in the evening to be able to put-
Taco party, the bacio, until everybody had an agreement, and you let them know the code state would have to be within your, or-
Your footprint.
Yeah.
You can't sort of sublease other frontage.
Except the Bronxville diner.
Well, that's, that's on-street dining, that is not sidewalk seating.
Yeah, but the same frontage rule applies. Sorry, I'm leaning back.
You guys, if you recall, made that a possibility because of-
The other wasn't possible.
And the sidewalk.
So it's, you know, it's each, each application will have a turn. If it's allowed here, you will be asked for, have been asked for-
Right, they will similarly try to enter to sublease arrangements to be able to, I understand.
If, if, may I, if we were to put, as we recommend originally, the three tables of two against the wall and the building, and the three, four types, in this case, we would be able to make it much closer to them, and that way you wouldn't then fit from this, from the curb.
It would be a different variety of table, it wouldn't be this type of table, it would be a skinny table directly against, that can only really take two.
Yeah, a 24 by 10, it would be-
But would they have to resubmit, Christina?
You are reviewing and approving what's submitted, please.
But can, can action be taken in two parts? Can one approve an accommodation now, and then they, could they come back for more later?
If you guys want to approve what is here now, so those three tables of four, and those two tables, you can, and then they can reapply for additional tables, kind of what they're requiring from now, but you can't say, okay, leave them on the whole.
No, I understand.
And we just can't add another seat to the, to tables.
So it would be the application, you would be removing those three tables, and approving the rest, whatever you want to say, and then they can come back for additional two, what you can use.
And, and then that would give us a chance to minimize the impact on the restaurant, but still allow us to consult with the chief.
Still getting more of the-
Yeah.
And, and also give us the opportunity to hear what the chief has to say-
Right.
That there are bollards-
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so I'll throw out one other thing. If, for instance, tonight we chose to approve the three by the window and the two by the door.
With three chairs.
With, I think we can only approve two chairs tonight, Christina, you tell me. Okay, so we can only approve for now the two chairs on each, it sounds like, in the three, but that's a big step compared to the eight. The other question I want to raise is, would we want to do that effective tonight? Should there be any penalty for the noncompliance to date? Is there a perspective on that?
You know, I was quite disappointed to learn that there seemed to be a disobedience of requests from the village for compliance with the rules that have been established. I guess, I don't, what's the right way to act in that? I, I think, as I go through town, I see a lot of noncompliance. And I think the enforcement in the village hasn't been aggressive. And I think singling out the tavernry for what might be some justifiable consequences, I think we haven't really laid the presidential groundwork for that. I'm sorry to say that because I really was disappointed to see pictures of tables that Jim had asked be taken away.
So I guess my question is, would someone like to make a motion to approve the three tables for four? Yes, Kevin, please.
If you do approve it this way and they be out of compliance, again, can their whole application be revoked and they lose all their chairs?
Is that something we would need to make a condition of this approval?
I would think so because they already showed that they weren't complying, but this is, you know.
Well, Jim's pretty good at making all of the above motions, so can you take a shot at this?
Sure. I would just add, just add one thing. I think if I understand what Christina says is, we can approve up to the number they're asking for. Is that correct? So we could say three and three on the end. We could say.
Using a different configuration.
No, we could say 18.
Yeah.
18 against the wall. Correct? Three, three, four, four, four.
Christina, I thought we couldn't change the configuration.
So, so right now they're requesting three tables of four. They currently have four tables of two. So you can approve three tables of two if you want to. Three tables of two. You can say we'll approve three tables of three or we'll approve three tables of four. They are asking for four.
Right, no, we're asking about the two at the front. Well, they could always come back at the September meeting to ask for the additional.
I'm sorry, may I, may I say something?
Yes.
The tables are obviously movable objects. They don't have to be set up that way. As you have said, as long as we set up and we follow the rules, if anybody wants to come in and check it, we will not be in compliance. So we want to be sure of that. Would it be feasible, if possible, approve the, again, two of these four tabs, like it has been said, if I may go close to that. We need three against the wall and you're getting closer to it, so it will be five tables with at least ten.
I don't think we can do that tonight. We don't have the drawing, we don't have the measurements. Maybe at the next meeting.
I would suggest you apply for the enforcement September agenda is fully applicable, so the time of September goes to the October. But you can apply for the October agenda for those extra tables. For those extra tables, but we should obviously show, write down the measurements, but then you should have the tables there, is my suggestion, and show photos so that you can see it. Because seeing the photos of the tables there is completely different than seeing it like this, because obviously this is a shared dining room, but then we see somebody walking, they're like, oh, the chair is pulled down. It's a little different. So if they can set it up, so if you focus and submit it, you would be able to see it better.
Yeah.
So I have another question. What if we approved moving two of the tables?
It's not.
From the, well.
Yeah, we got, I guess we got to stay with the plan.
Why? Where does it say that? We've certainly changed, conditioned a lot of things.
Well, we could defer that review to the building inspector, no? Yeah.
I think, if I may, I recognize the safety issues the chief has brought up. For me, I think right now, I have a bigger issue with the aesthetics of this proposal. It's almost as if you're putting tables in the middle of this sidewalk now.
Mm-hmm.
And creating a slalom for pedestrians to get through, either, you know, you squeeze through.
One side or the other.
On one side or the other. And aesthetically, you know, I do think our planning board is responsible for the aesthetics of the village. When I look at this image of this setup without the chairs.
And without the umbrellas.
It looks extremely daunting to walk through.
Yeah.
And so, for me, I find it hard to envision a scenario where there are tables by the curb that makes this work. I think the three tables along the storefront makes sense and the two smaller tables in front of the front door makes sense. There's a wide pathway for people to walk through. I think that works. Otherwise, it feels like we're kind of shoehorning something here to try to make it work.
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't empirically work. That would be my first statement. My second is, to make this existing diagram work requires extremely precise compliance of where these chairs sit.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, the applicant has proven that not, has not proven to, to me at this time, that they are very focused on compliance. So if, I think if they had came before this board with a clean slate of years of compliance, I'd say, okay, maybe we give you a shot if I got over the aesthetic issues of complying by the inch here to be in compliance. But I think as a result of that prior compliance, I'm not willing to give any latitude or trust that they would be compliant on that. So my, what I think I would be supportive of would be the three, four, the three tables of four along the frontage and the two tables of two in front, which will have doubled their outdoor seating.
Right.
From eight to 16, which I think is substantial and that hasn't been granted recently to anybody. And so I would think that's enough. And if after this year of compliance and, and history with it, if they feel that that is not enough and they need another 12 chairs, then be happy to review that application next year.
Any other discussion before someone makes a motion?
I would just add that I agree with Michael, that I, I don't, I don't like the tables next to the street. I would be open, though, in the next time you could come to putting an extra four table against the wall if it looked aesthetically compliant with the rest. If they own that one to the right, they're saying if they could put another table to the right, if they own that space there where that door is and we looked at it and it looked like it was okay, I would be okay with that. But I, but right now I would agree with, I'm in favor of approving.
And the thing we'd have to think through at that time is, I think there are a number of other restaurants that would love to have that. Maybe it's a good thing.
Right.
I don't know, but.
I'd be in agreement with the 16 tables along.
Because Haiku's had a lot of fun with that additional.
Yep.
Space.
And it's a gauntlet.
And it's what?
It's a gauntlet as well.
Yeah, it is. It's hard to get through, to your point.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also open to exploring an additional table not directly in front of the frontage, but I think those are, that's sort of a difficult precedent as well.
We don't have to decide that.
No, we don't, we don't. Well.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I think I move that we approve the plan as submitted without the three tables closest to the.
Street?
Street.
And there's a proviso, I think, that if they don't comply with the conditions, it can be.
Yes, if we find noncompliance, then we revert to the previously approved configuration. Now, yeah.
I'm still unclear. Can we add the third chair?
No. We can only approve what's there.
We, it's not, I think it's up to us. I think what Mike was saying is he'd rather not. You can correct me, Mike, on that? So there may be different perspectives here as to whether we should do that tonight.
Did you address why you wouldn't want to add the third chair?
I think going from eight seats to 16 seats is more than generous at this time. And after showing a year of compliance, then I'm happy to review expanding it further, but I'd like to see them comply with this setup initially.
Mike, I endorse that sentiment, but I think the likelihood of people pulling a third chair up to either of those two tables is pretty high.
Right.
They'd be noncompliant, and so it's, am I, is it fair to say that would happen?
If, what happens if a table shows up with a stroller? Can they sit there?
If what?
A stroller, high chair.
Right, right.
It's, it's, I would just say, that is in front of a door, right? And so the reason why they're not putting the additional chairs on those other sides is because you need to create flow from people coming in. That's going to come into.
Is there, is there, is there a picture of the two? Do you have a, like a real life photo of those, that section? Or just this section? Is it, is it?
But those aren't currently there, is that correct? Right, there isn't a picture because it isn't currently there.
Oh, I see.
We have one of them there. These, as I said before, this picture is of a normal set. Those tables are the ideal, the plan that we apply.
Those are new.
This is, this is what the one table looks like. Yeah, that's pretty, one of them is the one on the left.
If you just look at Google, that is a, it's just, that is a tight door. And there's, there's 28 seats going in there, just, if you add more chairs there, you're really creating a pinch point for people to come in and out.
Which means why the architect hadn't proposed it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, you've convinced me. So.
Is that your motion? Is there a second?
And before, sir, may I, may I say something about this? I understand that we are dealing with the abstract of the tables and the compliance and the look of the town and everything else. Before you make a ruling, I will please ask you to also consider this. You are also talking about the livelihood and perhaps even the survival of this restaurant. For you guys, I understand, for most people it's only 12 seats. For all this is a revenue source, for my staff, for my servers. Once I remove the chair, because Mr. Power had requested, my servers came to be marked off. How are we going to make any money? How are we going to do that with that number of seats? And that was another reason why, obviously, we were reluctant to remove those chairs.
Reasons.
I understand that we have not been in compliance and I understand the request of the chief of police, that's why we have made these changes. But before you cement this for the restaurant season, this actually does affect.
But in fairness, I think whoever signed up the lease for this restaurant knew that the approval was for eight seats. That was the approval. The activities had been larger, but that was the approval. And as we increase it to 16 seats, I think we are taking into account a balance of the interests of the, you know, proprietor with the interests of pedestrians in the village. You want every restaurant to thrive, but you know, it's all, all balancing act.
And you do have 46 seats. That's a lot of seats. If you can't make money on 46 seats, then, yeah.
We're not, we, we try to, we try to improve it, we try to make.
I mean, if 12 seats are going to make or break your thing, then that's, that's.
The former, yes.
That's.
In the end, though, we've got to do.
Well, I mean, we're going from eight to 16, so we're.
Is, is there a second for the motion? I didn't hear a second.
Second.
Any discussion before we vote?
One quick comment. Admittedly, the decision we're proposing to make right now would remove those three tables for two months, maybe more. But you're free to come back and propose those three if we get a positive response from the chief, which I think we ought to seek his advice on this. I don't know if that helps or, or not, but.
Would it be feasible? Would it be feasible? And again, to wait for the chief to decide if they allow it or not?
But then you're back to eight.
Then you're back to eight tables.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah.
You get eight or 16.
I think you'd rather have 16 than eight.
Yeah.
He wants the 10 feet.
But I think we would like to have further dialogue with him, but we can't have that tonight.
Because this is going to come up again and again.
You bet.
Yes, yes, no, and that's, that made me quite reluctant to substitute my judgment on pedestrian safety for his, so.
Yeah. All right, so if there's no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay.
We wish you the best.
Thank you.
Okay, our next application is for, I think it's 34 Sturgis, are they here?
Yeah, John's right there.
So if you, please, come on up. Sorry you had to wait. If you can just speak into the mic, it may be a little low for you.
Hi, I'm John Colangelo, resident of 34 Sturgis.
We're having a little trouble hearing you.
John Colangelo, owner of 34 Sturgis. This is Chris Hale from Sun Blue Energy.
Hold on, we're getting you up. Okay, so if you could take us through your application, please.
Yes, so we have 19 solar panels going on the back roof of the Colangelo home. And we have it, so it's only facing in the backyard, facing south. They're all rectangular arrays, no jagged edges or anything. And there it is.
Can you explain how, I was curious as to, what was it, 7.8 kilowatts?
Yep.
How do you come up with, do you figure out the number of panels first and then determine how many kilowatts that supports? Or do you say the house needs or, or?
So.
Percentage of the electrical load is 80%, and that's equivalent to eight kilowatts, and that's how we get the, all the panels?
Yep. So if you look at the most efficient roofs, you try to cover as much of the annual electricity as possible. And so you could technically put panels on the street-facing roof. They just wouldn't be very efficient in the winter time, so that was a decision that John made in the process to focus just on the back roofs. And if you take every solar panel's 420 DC watts, multiply it by 19, that's how you get to that eight kilowatts. And then that leads to the amount of kilowatt hours that the system's going to create each year to try to cover as much of the electricity that it consumes.
Does that cover the electrical needs of the house?
No, no.
It would be supplemented by.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
It seemed like there was a lot of back and forth with our consultant on the application. Could you explain to us what happened there?
Yeah, there was just a lot of questions. And there was one set of drawings that we had submitted for the board last month. We were supposed to be here in June, but there was one thing we overlooked, and it was the percentage of the roof that's covered by solar panels. It's actually less than the 20% required. We had included the few side roofs, or it just wasn't fully considering all the roof space.
Where are the side roofs?
17% of the roof coverage.
Where are the side roofs that you're referring to?
I think it was just these lower roofs on the right-hand side. It only covers, this solar panel only covers 17% of the whole roof area. I thought it was 22%.
Because there's an additional bit of roof?
Yes.
That's the point, okay. That's not on the roof, when you think about it, it's a little lower, but we, we understand. Design review, had some comments on this? Had there been any changes made in response to the design review committee's discussion?
I think that items they mentioned was, one was the potential for glare and solar panels really are designed to absorb as much sunlight. And studies have been showing that glare is not an issue. And then they just mentioned that they wish there was fewer solar rays. They didn't like the fact that we were five. We're just trying to maximize the amount of electricity production while keeping it aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah, and I think they also had a concern with the fact that the panels were disaggregated and spread over the roof. And they were troubled by the fact that a variance was required, which it seems like is now not the case.
Right.
Well, I think there's also a comment made that there. Well, I think the, there's also a comment made that there are trees on either side, and so it covers it, but what happens in the fall when the leaves go off the trees, and are the neighbors gonna s-
They're all evergreens.
Pardon?
They're all evergreens.
Oh, they're evergreens, okay. But it, it did seem like there was a dispute, we got letters from the neighbors, you know, saying that, uh, the application was indicating this would not really be visible from the neighbors, but the neighbors, you know, objected to the application and thought it would be visible, so do you have a, a perspective on that?
Um, you know, it's not visible from a public road, there, there, there are trees behind, or fifty feet high. There's a lower portion that doesn't cover, um, some of it, um, but there's only one neighbor that can actually see this, and that is the one directly behind me. Uh, you know, it's just impossible to make everybody happy.
I believe it was the neighbor on either side, is that correct?
Well, the one on the side was complaining about the glare, uh, so, but there's no glare.
So, are the, are these solar panels glass?
Yes.
But glass reflects?
Uh, well, it's black, so it's, it's-
But, but, I mean, and I, John and I are buddies, I know, I know exactly, I lived down the street, I mean, the, the roof is where the exit sign is to the house, I mean, it's pretty close to that house, I mean, it's, that's, if glare comes, it's gonna come, and, and the pictures that Lavorne sent, this is with full foliage, you could see the entire roof.
From the house behind?
From the house behind, and, and, and the, and the, and the code, the local code says, "All measures should be taken to avoid or mitigate any glare on the neighbor's property. The greatest extent possible equipment shall be installed in a manner that minimizes viability." So, if I was living in his house, I would also be sort of concerned that there one is, could be glare, given how close it is. If it was a mile away, I wouldn't care, but it's really close. And two is, what impact does that have to his potential resale or whatever? I mean, it's, you know, I, I get it, I, I've walked my dog by there, I see that, and I, and I get what you're doing, and I think it's, you know, you wanna do what you wanna do, you wanna minimize your, your thing, but, you know, you say in one of your responses that homeowners have trees on either side of the property, making it extremely difficult for surrounding neighbors to see the panels, which is not true at all, if you look at the pictures. They can see it completely clear with full foliage, not, forget about the wintertime. So, I, you know, so I guess your comment is, not everyone's gonna be happy, but your response, your response is not correct, saying that-
The other part-
That it's extremely difficult to, for people to see, when it is, it is very visible from the pictures seen. So, that's my only, that's my, that's my biggest, I'm just gonna be honest, that's my biggest problem with this application, that you're not, you know, you're saying one thing and the picture is saying another one, and it's, and it's a very close, from your roof to their, their backyard, very close.
Right, so, you know, I, there are larger trees, there is about like five larger trees, it's just that have like a very deep root, uh, so I really can't plant any larger trees. I did plant, uh, four trees that, over time, will be covering that portion of it, and also, um, on the Lavorne side, there are trees that are climbing up the fifty-foot mark, uh, at a rate of like two feet a year.
And, but, did, did, the, the, I heard it from the DRC, there, when you moved in, did you take a lot of trees down that were between you and Lavorne?
Yeah, there was a ton of overgrowth there, of like trees strangling, uh-
So it was just, it was necessary?
Yeah.
But that would've, that would've, so you're trying to reestablish one so that becomes-
It was just, it was just very chaotic, there was no rhyme or reason for any of the trees.
Right, I don't, I've never been back there, so I don't know.
So, you know, we just cleaned it up, there was a lot of ivy growing on these hemlocks, which actually contributed to like the, uh, the dead branches that are lower.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, once that has been removed, there's no new growth that's coming on, there's better growth that is, uh, gonna be tall and growing, like, I, I said, like, two, two feet a year. In the short term, yes, you can see it, but in the long term, it will be covered.
Is there a tension between growing trees to block the view and blocking the sunlight from the-
No.
Why, why not?
It's not high enough, yeah, so.
So, okay.
Yeah, so right now, the trees are, are like fifty feet high, but you're still getting the-
The sunlight's coming from a different, the sunlight's coming from a different direction.
Yeah.
It has no impact, so, the, the, the house is over here, that I'm talking about, the sun's coming from over here to the back of his roof, it has, it's not even-
It's Thirty-One Holmesdale that's directly behind.
Yeah, so, you see, you see that's the front of the house there, on the, on the right?
Yeah.
So the back of the house, and the house we're talking about is, you can see it on the, that's the, that's the Lynch's house, but the one behind that, so it's way over there, it's not coming from where the sunlight comes.
So I've looked at other applications that have been, uh, brought up to the board. Uh, one right, Crow's Nest, uh, it, it's a massive solar array that you can see from a public road, so if you drive on, on the high road, you can see the back of the house on Crow's Nest.
Yeah.
Um, you will not have that visibility from, from this installation.
I was just concerned about the, I mean, honestly, about the glare, I've read a lot about it since the application came.
You can send your reports about-
I don't know nothing, I don't, I don't know anything about solar, but I know eons ago, there was a glare problem, and now the new technology absorbs more of the thing and becomes less glare. My only concern was, it's so close to their house, that any glare is, is a potential problem.
Well, and how does the glare, I don't know-
Can I, can I just?
If I could ask just one quick question?
Sure.
Um, if, is the glare something that, if the sun comes from the south, where does the reflection go? Back south, or does it deflect to either side? Because if somebody's not-
It's absorbed by the panel.
Huh?
Right, it's absorbed.
It's what?
Designed to absorb the sun's-
Sure, sure.
To create electricity.
But, but, but his question is, if there was glare, would it, would it, would it go back towards the sun and not disperse? If there was glare, just-
If it was a mirror, it'd depend upon the angle that it was-
The angle the sun hit it, yeah.
Yeah, so there was a concern years ago, like, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, of airport that was gonna put in a solar carport, and they had, landing airplanes were concerned about that.
Oh.
And they did a study, and they were, uh, that, it, it proved that it wasn't gonna be an issue, and they went forward with it.
The other remark I'll, I'll make is, I was looking back at the part of the code that, uh, you know, was approved a couple of years ago by the trustees, specifically to streamline solar applications, and I found the wording interesting, it said, "This is a section to allow and encourage-"
Mm-hmm.
"-um, applications for solar," and it, it didn't even say that they have to be on the rear of the house, it's nice that they are on the rear of the house here, but, you know, I guess if you can't put solar panels on the rear of your house, if anyone can see them from anywhere, it's safe to say we won't be approving any solar panels.
No, I'm just, you can see the, there's, there's, there's John's house in yellow, and there's the house I'm talking about, and I'm not here, I'm just dating for them.
I'm just saying it's most of Bronxville.
Yeah, I'm just saying like, that, that those, where the panels are located-
Yeah.
-they are reflecting in that direction.
Yeah, I get it.
That's all, and that's what the DRC was concerned about.
Yeah.
But, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I just wanna say what I wanna say.
Yeah.
It, it also says, "To the greatest extent practicable, solar energy equipment shall use, um, no, uh, installed in a manner that minimizes its visibility from," no, that's not it.
Take your time.
This one here, um, no, that they should be aggregated, where's that?
Yes, that, that's, that was, that's in the-
That was the DRC.
"To the maximum extent practicable," yeah.
So-
Can we go back to the blueprint?
Well, wait a second, on that, on that point, so, you've got one area where you can put, is it eight or six panels?
Yeah, it was, I think it was eight.
Eight, and then you've gotta put two more panels.
Uh, nine.
There, there, there it is, on the left, there it is.
So it's, yeah, it's six, and then six, and then those two on either side of the E, and that gets you up to the eight kilowatts, roughly.
Yeah.
So you couldn't reduce the number of panels that you were thinking about.
But it's money, it's money.
What does the, what does the neighbor see? What's the neighbor's view of the roof?
Well, can I just go back to the other picture where they showed the, the neighbor's house?
We, we were sent that picture.
Right, but I don't know where the panels, I couldn't tell where the panels were.
So, this is Joe Lavorne's house right behind me.
Yeah.
This is my house, that's the Lynch's house, beside, um, beside, there's, there barely any visibility from the side, uh, and he was the one that was, I guess, complaining about the glare. Joe Lavorne's house is just on the middle, um, yeah, certain parts of his house, you can see the roof at this time, um, but I believe over time, you can see it minimized. Uh, it's not directly, it's not like directly, it's in the back of my house, it's not like, sort of like, every morning, this is where your roof is, and, uh-
James?
There's six hemlocks here now, I planted also two, uh, pretty hard roofs that over time will, will grow, and then also, uh, a couple spruces that are between, but, like I said, I can't take enough to, 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 uh, plant anything, but enough to protect or someone who's there, and not only from current, but also from previous to the-
And it, just in terms of the view of the disaggregated panels, it does look like the neighbor who complained sees the nine panels that are aggregated, and I don't think sees much of the ones that are put on the sloping sides.
Yeah, he won't be able to see the ones on-
You saw his pictures, right?
On the side.
Yeah, 'cause you've got some here, and then some like this.
And also, and also that peak is much more elevated-
Mm-hmm.
-than, than his house, so-
He's at an oblique angle to those ones on the side.
Correct.
The one that he has a direct view of is the one that has the nine panels.
Yeah, the one that you wouldn't remove.
Oh.
Yeah.
Right, yours?
No, this is the view.
These were the pictures that the neighbor sent.
So he only sees the, the nine?
Yeah.
Which is the biggest bulk of them, but it, as to the aggregation point.
Right, they're the ones that are most aggregated.
Yeah, exactly, and-
And just another question, just, uh, I was interested, is more interested, along the driveway, is where the, the equipment comes down, and then, is that like some kind, is that like what people, is it similar to people's Tesla's charging station? It aggregates the power and then hooks in, in the basement to, to what?
Yeah, so-
To a, to a separate panel?
Yeah, electricity flows down into a circuit breaker box, each circuit breaker is a string of solar panels.
So was it similar to if you had like an external generator that comes in, there's a separate box for that, it will be-
Similar to the automatic transfer switch.
Interesting.
With a load center, which is, you know, basically a circuit breaker box, and then a disconnect switch.
Is there a battery storage for this?
No.
So you could actually be, be some-
My car has a battery storage.
So you could actually be, be having power during a power outage?
Uh, no, it's a safety feature built into the inverters that shuts off unless it sees a current.
Could've been your selling point.
[laughing]
So it shuts off the, shuts off the system?
You'd have to be off the grid to work during that time.
Other questions before we head toward the public meeting? Okay, why don't we open up the public meeting? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this application? Okay, so we'll close the public meeting, we did receive several letters, um, from neighbors, and they're the neighbors, I think, on, behind and one on the side, that, uh, you know, had concerns about the visibility of the panels, and I think, Albert, you're pretty familiar with the view and the angle from there, because you live in the neighborhood, so-
Well, you saw the pictures.
That's worthwhile.
They see the nine.
Yeah, yeah. So why don't we put it out for discussion? Who would like to go first?
This, oh, go ahead, Mike. This is tough, um, the code has been written to allow for people to put in solar panels, and, um, from my understanding, there is no request for a variance, it's all within, the application is within the code. But then they left wiggle room in the code to say, um, that the planning board can't review design elements and, and have concerns around glare, um, and design elements in terms of how many different spots that it's located in. Um, I think it's factual that the neighbors from the side and behind can see the full panels, um, we've, we've seen the photos from the side, it's, they, from their bedrooms, it can, it looks directly on those, onto the solar panels. Um, whether there's glare in the panels, it's very difficult to maintain, because technology continues to evolve, unless we kind of have one directly here, and we track the sun, how it bounces off, would be the only way to verify it, which is impossible. Um, so I've just stated fact, I, um, it, it comes to a very difficult decision, 'cause at, initially, I was thinking, if just the neighbor in the back could see those big panels, that's one thing, maybe you can just approve the, the ones on the side, but the side neighbor clearly can see it as well, um, that's all I have.
But the code doesn't say that the panels should be totally obscured.
Yeah, it leaves it to our discretion.
It, it says, it says, "To the greatest extent practical, equipment shall be installed in a manner that minimizes visibility from surrounding properties."
Yeah, which basically puts it in our court.
And, and, and that's, and that's, you know, the, the two, the pictures from the two neighbors, you see the panels.
Yeah.
Um, and, and the concern from the DRC was, is there glare? We don't know, you guys know, um, technology has improved.
Yeah, are you allowed to share the picture?
If you have something to share, it's okay, go ahead.
No, I'm saying, are you allowed to share the pictures that were sent to you guys?
Um, I could-
Are we?
Christina, talk to us.
Yeah.
I think, do we have them?
It used to be that letters that were sent were put up on the public site, and they no longer are, um-
They no longer are, because unfortunately, once we put them on the internet, and they hit them back.
Yeah.
And everyone who has sent them, the previously, has requested to remove them, and we haven't tried, and, and, and-
But I guess we're trying to figure out, is it public information?
Yes, I-
I can-
Yeah, we should, that makes sense.
If it had asked, it would have been possible.
It'd be from Lavorne.
Well, you have it on the Dropbox, I have the Dropbox open.
Yeah.
There it is, there, uh, that, that's-
It's the one from Thirty-One?
Yep, that's-
If you can go down to those pictures.
Well, while we're looking at that, I mean, to the extent practicable, there's no other place you can put the panel.
It's the one on the, there it is.
Here, here, a few pictures.
John, there's, there's two pictures, this is one of two. So that's where the nine's gonna be, to the left of that tree?
No.
Where the, where the roof is, or, explain that to us.
So this is where the nine panels-
Yep.
Oh, okay, we agree.
Uh, I'm seeing from this angle, you can probably see the ones around the top of this ridge.
He's not gonna see that.
From Lavorne's.
And the Lynch's on the other side, he's not gonna see any of these, or, or is that not true?
Well, do you have a picture from Lynch's that you said you did?
I just sent it to you, Christina.
Hey.
So, but there's two pictures of Joe.
This is, this is also from his, I guess, upper-
That's from his driveway, it looks like that's his basketball?
From the back of his house, from his upper-
Yep, yep.
So you're saying from the second floor, so it's clearing the trees?
So it's the same picture, one's from the bottom, the, the, the ground floor, one's from the second floor.
Right.
What was that?
The two pictures are one from his driveway, is one's from his second floor.
Yeah.
This is the Lynch's, this is-
Right, so this is a side view.
Yeah.
They'd get to see like three or four of them, I think.
So, this is from-
Joe, this is Lynch, Mike Lynch's house.
Is that like your deck, or, 'cause I don't really know what this, so that's the back of the house, which-
I don't know, it's, I've never been-
I mean, they can't bring it on the, on the, on the Sturgis side of it, so, I understand[1722.72] I mean, they can't really, on the, on the, on the Sturgis side of it, so, I understand that they can see it from that angle, but I don't, I rarely ever see anything on that side of the house. And I don't know how they got, how to take that picture, too.
So what would be, what would be on that roof? Would it be?
So can you, can you take that, uh, can you look up that, like, area line, and just sort of see what they were taking?
You just show us what, what it looks like.
You're pretty good at dancing around this.
There we go.
So, I don't really have a pointer, but at the end of that ridge, in that bottom corner, is, I guess, where they took it, I don't even know if they have like a porch or a porch or a deck out there, but I'm really not, I'm not really sure how they, would have taken that picture, standing on something.
But you can see LaVornia's, was right from, his house is right there, that picture's there, and then the Lynch's took it from the, so they're gonna see the side. Uh, it looks like it's from.
The near side.
It looks like it's, yeah, yeah.
They spend most of their outdoor time, like, in the front.
Okay.
The back area, I haven't, I've never really seen it.
Lynch's is, is the right, is the, is the brownish.
There's right and down, those are the two letters.
Thanks, John.
So, I guess, where they took it.
Is from right from there, yeah.
Yep.
It's possible that's one of the bedrooms I'm not.
It, it seems like the question is whether it has to be unseen, and, you know.
Solar panels are solar panels.
Right.
We do have a hundred percent survival rate for people seeing solar panels.
No, no, understood, this is, but.
I have, I have a question about, 'cause you guys are also doing solar on the Public Works Building, right?
Yeah.
Not us, we have no purview over public buildings in Bronxville, neither the village nor the school.
But that has visibility more so than any other building here in town from a public road.
It might, yeah.
And has that been approved?
Excuse me?
We're not in charge of that.
Okay.
You're our first, you're our first one, if I'm not correct.
Nope.
No. There was one that was a much more remote location.
Yeah.
I'm, I was not here.
I don't think you were. Um, you could've come, but.
I believe that one was approved, nobody can actually see it, it might not.
Right, that, that wasn't sort of, that wasn't a fair test of what our judgment is.
I, I think people should be allowed to put solar panels, or if they meet all the, all the rules. My only concern is, it's literally from where we are to that exit sign is where the roof is, from their backyard, it's very close. And if there was a glare, it could have a negative impact, 'cause that's their second bedroom, their, their whole, their whole back of their house faces their, I mean, like everyone, every, most houses face another house.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, the way it is around here.
Have you guys noticed the glare from the one on, uh, Crow's Nest?
Have we got any complaints?
I don't think anybody has a view of that one.
You can see it from the high road, driving every day.
Excuse me?
You can see it from the high road, driving every day.
Yeah, I know drivers would complain.
You know, from here to the exit sign, that's, that's close.
Yeah.
That's, that's my only major concern. I'm not against him having solar panels.
Yeah, so I, I guess I'll jump in since I have a point of view here, which is, I think the trustees know the nature of this village, and I think they know that ninety percent of the houses in Bronxville are configured roughly like this one is, in terms of its proximity to neighbors, mine certainly is. And, you know, if, if we can't do something like this, I don't think there's going to be solar in Bronxville. So, you know, to me, you know, this is an application that puts the, you know, panels in the rear of the house, which is considerative, it reduces the number of people who will be impacted, it doesn't go down to zero, but it does reduce the impact, and it, uh, you know, is otherwise, I think, in compliance with what the trustees had adopted. I, I don't think they were looking for a mile clearance because the whole village is a mile. Um, so, you know, that's why I see merit in this, but let's kick it around to other people.
The, 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 the ironic thing here is that they were on the front, it would be, there's no one ne- near, there's a yard, a, a road and a yard before you get to the other house, there'd be no impact from glare. Um, but, you know, I, I think I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna abstain from this vote, I think, just 'cause I, or, you know.
But other folks around the board, opinions, perspectives, please?
I think the last thing I'd say is, if we, if this application is within the code, and we don't, and we don't have any other suggestions on where to put these panels, then, to your point, there is no solar in Bronxville. And so I think, based on the way the code has been written, um, that they're in compliance is fine. If the trustees and the villagers, through this experience, decide that there is concern on glare, then they should rewrite the code and say, "There is no solar," because I can't figure out anywhere else that they could make solar work on this house.
The one point I'd make on behalf of Albert is, it's true, but if they change the code after this, that one house on Homestead is gonna be living with this. So you may not say it, but I'm gonna say it, I, I'm, I'm living with that, but that's, that's a reality.
That's the problem I have, is it's, it's, if there's a negative impact, it's gonna, you know, there's.
It's only one house.
There's gonna be a problem.
Well, but, but is there glare, or is there not glare? I mean, the, the. There is no glare. So the, the people that are concerned about the glare, that's misplaced.
I can't speak to that.
Well, it's also the aesthetics.
Well, if there's no glare, then.
I, I think it's just, I, I know that, but it, there is no glare, there's, I think it's an aesthetic issue more than anything else, and I think the neighbors are using glare as a, but, you know, the, I, I'm not a subject matter expert on the solar panels. Uh, I have asked Chris to, to study, you know, what other studies have been done regarding glare, uh, and that's when he pulled up, and we can, we can send that to the planning board about the glare.
I think your point is, if you were putting jet black panels on the roof, theoretically, neighbors could have a concern just about the aesthetics of that, regardless of glare. But, you know, they've, in your view, chosen glare as, as the reason for the concern.
Or they haven't read the studies and assume glare. I don't wanna put.
Yeah, it could be any of the above. Absolutely.
Well, I, I think we're uncertain, I'm uncertain whether there is glare or not, but in the code, it says, "Measures need to be taken to mitigate any glare," whether that's in the manufacturing port, but that implies that the village believes there is potential glare, and that's what is being considered as part of our review.
Yeah. So for instance, if they had chosen panels that weren't absorbing, that would be a major factor, as we consider this.
And pretty inefficient technology.
Right.
Well, you know, but it does say, "All measures should be taken to avoid or mitigate any glare onto neighboring property." Why does it even say that? It's, it's, it's an open-ended statement.
It, it does use the phrase "avoid" or "mitigate," and mitigate doesn't mean eliminate, it means reduce. And I think, um, I think our hands are a bit tied here in terms of what we are considering, 'cause this was explicitly made something to encourage solar, and, um.
Is there other discussion?
I mean, other, other communities that have dealt with this issue, um, including one I'm familiar with up at Cape Cod, they, you know, a lot of the concerns has been about the optics of it, right?
Yeah.
And, and so, like, if you're in a historic zone in particular, um, then they want them to be in the rear of the buildings, which this does, um, and, uh, I, you know, I can, I can say that the glare issue, my father has solar panels, and there's no glare, um, from his. Now, I don't obviously know whi- whether the model that, that he has and this are compatible, uh, the same, but, um, I think that if we, to both of your points, if we, if, if this is in compliance, and it seems to be, and, you know, if you look at the clustering here, that's about as good as you can get, given the roof lines, right? You can't add more panels, given the unit size, to any of these that I can see, and if we did add them to one, we would have to, we'd break the symmetry of another, right? So I, it'd feel like they've done what they can with this footprint, um, and I just don't, the only thing with, is the glare, and I just don't know that that's actually going to be significant, 'cause I just haven't seen that in other installations.
Just, just to confirm, John, are, are you actively trying to help put plantings in that are going to eventually try to shield some of the view? Is that something you're actively doing?
All the trees that I've planted last year are gonna grow to thirty-five feet, uh, and I'm also adding two more trees.
Okay, so you're doing things to mitigate?
Correct.
Okay.
It'll take time.
Like I said, two, two feet a year, but, um, that, that's my estimate.
You, you can't put in thirty-five foot trees, I agree.
I mean, the, the only way to do is really take down what's there, dig out all those roots, and then like plant like twelve foot trees, but we're still only talking about twelve foot trees. So, we're, it, it's, you know, it's gonna take time either way. And on top of it, you'll see more, once I take down the bigger trees.
Yeah. If there isn't more discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
I move, we approve the plans for thirty-four Sturgis as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion before we, uh, vote? If not, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, good luck with your project, thank you. Okay, at long last, I think we've made it to the Taco Project. I'm hoping you're here for them.
Yes, aye.
Sorry about running late.
We ran late, too, it's all good.
To introduce the project, um, it's, uh, the application is for sidewalk.
Did you give your name, I'm sorry?
Sorry, my name is Nicholas Faustini, I'm an architect. Um, we submitted an application for sidewalk seating. It was brought to our attention recently that there was a dimensional issue on the sidewalk for the original plan that was provided. Um, we revisited, corrected that plan, and we submitted it for the board's review today. Um, that's the plan that's before you.
And what is your, what is your, what are you submitting?
Um, there was a dimensional discrepancy on the sidewalk, um, so we eliminated four, four seats to maintain the ten-foot setback that the police chief was recommending. So there were additional chairs closer to the curb, they've been eliminated to maintain that ten-foot setback that was recommended by the chief.
So you're recommending four chairs?
It's, it's, um, four tables, eight chairs.
Yep, four tables, eight chairs.
As presented on the latest drawing set, set here. It maintains a setback of eleven and a half feet from the table to the curb, um, and our, our proposal has been revised due to that matter, so that's, that's the, the new drawing that's before the board today.
Kevin, I'm recalling that you had some recommendations on this, I don't know if this complies with what you had recommended.
Seeing how he took those other ones out, it should be okay, 'cause he doesn't have the footage with.
Right, I think Kevin recommended this.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure this was in line with where you.
Making my job easier now, so.
Yeah, someone's complying.
And is this, what, what has been approved in the house?
So, there's a photograph of, uh, let's say the seating that was used during COVID, which shows additional seating closer to the curb, so that's the prior former seating arrangement.
Right.
We've eliminated those seats due to the fact that the police chief recommended that we maintain a ten-foot setback from the curb. So now the only seating will be, as you see on the photo on the left, that's four, four chairs there, um, and, I'm sorry, two tables, four chairs, that would be one of the seats or seating arrangements proposed, and the other is on the other side of the door.
Yep, and the tables and chairs by the curb will be eliminated.
Are eliminated.
Yeah, I get it.
I think that's a big improvement, because I know myself, when I go around that corner, it's always a little bit of a.
Dance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if there are gonna be a lot of questions here.
Looks good to me.
I have one question. When the tables aren't in use, they're gonna store them inside at the end of the night?
If that's a requirement of the, of the village, then.
I think that should be required for all sidewalk cafes, but.
We can certainly make it a requirement of this motion, yeah.
I recommend that, that.
Is that how it is currently for most of sidewalks? Or are they stacking it up against the wall?
Some stack it up against the buildings, it just, you know, you wanna clean or look when, you know, you don't want clutter out there, I guess, if I'm getting that.
No, theoretically, they could wash it and then put them back.
And we did see the, um, I have a book written for the coffee shop, that it was for the furniture, so, um.
They've got a lot of space inside, it's easy to do it.
I don't know if it's in the code, I can't exactly.
I don't think so. No.
And I must say, I think they do bring their stuff in at night, um, occasionally they might be out overnight, but for the most part, I do think they keep their sidewalk clear.
Yeah.
But we're just looking to approve the four tables and eight chairs.
So I think before we get to that, let's open up the public meeting. Seeing none, we'll close the public meeting. Any discussion before we have a motion here?
I'm happy.
I'm happy.
Yeah. So someone formally make the motion, so we can say.
I move, we approve the, uh, uh, plan for the Taco Project as presented, um, with the caveat that, with the con- condition that the, uh, um, tables and chairs be stored internally, um, when not in use.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, well done.
Thanks very much.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, guys.